To call the meeting to order, to begin, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, today is May 8th, and this is the regular monthly board meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. Mrs. Ettinger, can you please take the roll call?
Mark Barowski.
Here.
Eric Brooks.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. And Sue, can you please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. All right, we do not have bright lights tonight because we have actually two students, two schools with student representatives presenting to us tonight. So we will come back to that. First, we're going to do recognitions. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Steady, who's going to introduce three new administrators who are with us tonight.
Okay, how exciting. Good evening, everyone. I get to introduce three new administrators. So I'm going to have Eric, Karen, and Marlen just kind of come up and stand over here. Thank you. So I wanted to be able to allow you to put a name with a face. So we've approved some administrators in April and another one in May, or vice versa, two months ago. And they are going to start on July 1st, but you're going to maybe see them around already in June, so you can get some name with a face. First, I have Eric Plitza White. So Eric's going to be the next athletic director at North High School. As a reminder, he has a wealth of experience as an A.D. and is highly visible leader, who is ready to lead through this conference alignment. And he's excited to have a team of A.D.s to collaborate with, and he's ready to get more students involved in sports and activities at North. And then next, I have, oh, you're in the same order. I wrote this. That's amazing. I have Karen Knaff. Karen is going to be the next Director of Related Services. We're still working on the title. That's kind of a new version that she's just hearing right now. Karen is process-oriented and understands the importance of digging into data to find root causes as it relates to over-identification in special ed. She's excited to come back to Waukesha and join our team with Student Services. And then last month, you approved Marlen Figueroa. So Marlen is the next Principal of Hawthorne Elementary. She's a strong instructional leader with a sense of urgency. She's well-organized and student-centered, and is excited to also rejoin Waukesha, working with the staff and students at Hawthorne. So I just wanted to take a moment to welcome them and introduce you all.
Welcome to all of you. We're really grateful that you've chose to be a part of our leadership team. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you. All right, we have representatives with us tonight from both East High School and West High School. Are we starting with East this evening? Okay. So we will start with East, and our student representative is Claudia Rendin. Welcome.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Okay. My name is Claudia Rendin, and I'm a senior at Waukesha East. I'm here today to tell you about my journey toward graduation. In my seminar, one of our discussion prompts was, what is something that changed during our lifetime? While others would say it is their friends they meet, my major change in life that is significant to me would be attending East. This is my first year at Waukesha East, and I'm graduating, and I'm a graduating senior. Before joining East, I attended one of our larger high schools, where I was a person in a sea of students that I, and felt a little bit lost in a large environment. Coming to East has been a transformative experience for me because it shifted my perspective towards school and motivation to focus on my education and my career and life goals. It was at Waukesha East that I recognized the importance of my continuous learning and personal growth. This realization influenced my approach to schooling. I discovered the need for a strong education and career planning, as graduation would be here before I know it. Working collectively with my peers, I created professional documents, I built my resume, wrote cover letters, and secured letter of recommendation, all of which are significant steps towards setting myself up for success as I pursue my career and life goals. With the support of my teachers, I have grown in my self-confidence, in my educational knowledge, and in my ability to utilize these tools. I learned to reach my overall goal of becoming a nurse. This is a huge change for me because up until this year, I never thought I would want to go to college, let alone become a nurse. With nursing as my career choice, I have applied to M A T C for the CNA program, which is the first step to becoming a nurse. I planned to achieve this over the summer and begin my registered nursing classes in the fall. With the amazing staff at East, I felt loved and seen. East focused on getting all students involved as a school community. We had school cookouts, bake sales, and engagement nights, amongst many other activities held throughout the day and months at East. You can even learn how to fish. One thing I've learned how to do this year was to collaborate and network. These two things are essential to having a productive career. At East, there are, there is a focus on the durable skills, and I worked alongside my classmates to meet these important mastery learning targets. As a team, we made sure no one felt left out and everyone had a voice. As I started earlier before East, I was in a larger high school where I was always felt left out, but at East, it is the opposite. Students get the support and help from many other different teachers. I would like to thank Ms. Holmuth, Mr. Diedrich, and Ms. Maggie, and Ms. Poppy for ensuring that I and my education is worth it. So look out, I'm just getting started. Thank you.
Would you be open to some questions?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Does anyone want to start? Mrs. Koenig.
Well, first of all, as a mother of two nurses, I want to thank you for choosing and considering going into that field. It's a wonderful field. You're going to love it. What is it about the nursing field that piqued your interest?
I like helping people, and especially with my grandparents and seeing them that they can't really help theirself all the time. I really, I really find that as my passion to help others when they're like at the point where they can't really help theirself. So looking out for them and helping them is really important to me. Thank you.
Mrs. Voight.
I really commend your comments here. It was really a statement to the successes of East High School.
Thank you.
And, you know, I wish you well. The club would come at your graduation coming up very soon.
Thank you.
Claudia, you're very well spoken. So I'm curious, you said this is your first year at East. Has your perspective about attending East changed? What were you, what were you thinking, looking forward to, and/or anticipating when you started versus what you know now about the experience?
Yeah, absolutely. So before attending East, I was, I kind of struggled with attending school regularly. And as I attended East, I really, really felt the passion for my education, and I felt like this wasn't a want or a need. It was a little bit of mix of both, and that striving for my education every day and just learning new things and collaborating with other classmates was really what made me enjoy coming to school and networking with these different kinds of kids and everything, so.
Did you yourself learn how to fish?
Um, that wasn't one of the classes that I took, but a lot of other kids did, so it was really great.
Mr. Wad.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for coming. Congratulations on your upcoming graduation.
Thank you.
Love to hear the passion that you have found for your, not just for your current education, but, you know, career aspirations and so forth. I'm kind of curious, and if you're, and if you're comfortable sharing, would love to hear it. If not, that's fine, too. I'm kind of curious, what was it, or how did you find out that East was the right option for you? How did you, how did you arrive at that decision? And how was the transition for you?
Yeah, so before, I was kind of debating on if I wanted to go to East, and it was a really kind of hard decision for switching from a big high school with all the friends that I've always grew up with and knew, and then switching to a more smaller high school. So before coming there, it was kind of hard for me, but as I got adjusted into the school, I really found that maybe more a smaller group would be best for me to really have that hands-on learning and to have those teachers that are right there, and I could just ask a question with no weight or anything.
Well, that's great. I'm, I'm so pleased you got that opportunity. I can just hear in your voice the difference that it obviously has made for you, so congratulations, and look forward to seeing you at the graduation celebration as well.
Thank you, yeah.
Mr. Brooks.
Yeah, just echoing what Mr. Wad said. Congratulations. I'm very proud of you, and can definitely see how, how excited you are about this opportunity and to be able to go on and pursue your career in nursing. I'm very excited for you.
Thank you.
If there's one piece of advice that you can give a student who's coming into East for the first time, you know, in future years, what would that advice be?
Advice, something that's really hard for me is to kind of open up and speak up. So I feel like since East is such, how do I say this, like, they're, they're so welcoming. I would, that advice that I would give them is to just be theirself and have no shame in being theirself, and just get to meet other people that you never thought you would be able to speak to. And yeah, so, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Again, thank you. Congratulations on your upcoming graduation. And again, like I said, welcome, Mrs. Voight, I commend you as well. And like Ms. Koenig said, you are entering a profession that is a very thankless job. When we talk about teachers and social workers and nurses, it is a thankless job, and you are heroes. And so you're becoming part of a profession where you're saving lives, so that is very commendable. It sounds like you have a solid plan going for yourself. You know what you want out of life at this age. Most people, you know, your age, even my age, is still trying to figure out life, so that's really good. Take it and run with it, and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much for being here tonight. Good luck to you. All right, and next we have Grant Nicholson and Lisa Eepen to update us on activities and events at West High School. Did I say that right? Wait.
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Grant. I'm a senior at Waukesha West High School. Basically, we're here today to update you on what's been going on for the past semester at West. If you remember, we were here earlier in the year and kind of gave you a rundown. We're here to update you and let you know what's going on.
Welcome back.
You got it? There you go. And hi, my name is Lisa Eepen. I'm also a senior at Waukesha West, and we are here today to talk about all the clubs, activities, and athletics that are happening at West. So for athletics, our motto this year was to win impressively, and we have continued to show that throughout the winter and the spring season. In girls' softball, they are currently at a three-game winning streak, and sadly, yesterday's weather did not allow them to play against Arrowhead, but hopefully, they will be able to win against Arrowhead. Boys track and field and girls' track and field had a co-ed meet at K M for the Stinky Invitational. The girls' track and field team placed second overall, with Nivea Levin hanging, winning athlete of the meet, placing first in the 100-meter dash, 200-meter dash, triple jump, and long jump. Boys' basketball and girls' basketball have also shown great success within their season, with girls' basketball making it to regional finals. And for boys' swim, we had a freshman, Ryan Warner, place in the state meet.
Boys' baseball has kicked off their season in a great way. They are currently 11 and 5. We're doing really well. We even got a pitcher with a 12-strikeout game, which was very impressive. Boys' golf has been extremely competitive this year and is growing as a program with more golfers than ever before. Boys' tennis is having their best season since before COVID. They just hosted the May the Fourth Quad at West meet, and they still have many events to go in their season. Wrestling had a historic year. They had three different athletes, Xander Ku Canon, Isaiah Guerrero, and Trevor Moss all reached 100 career wins, and the team went 15 and 6 in dual meets, as well as taking fourth in the Classic Eight Conference, as well as sending nine wrestlers to state. Boys' lacrosse team has started their season with a very good record of 5 and 5, and are taking on Kettle Moraine today at 7:30. The girls' lacrosse team has also had a very promising start to their season and is hosting the Senior Sunset next year for all exiting seniors, which is a very cool thing that they're doing.
Okay, yeah, you want to go?
Yeah, all right. So four activities to start. The West End Players, by a very successful performance of Ms. Holmes, as well, as we're selected, were one out of the 29 high schools to be selected to participate in the Harry Potter Broadway Show for High School, which is pretty cool. It's a cool opportunity they're going to do next October. In DECA, Harper-Pew and Mega Moira made it to Nationals and competed in Anaheim, California, which is very cool. That's like one of the first times it's happened in school history. NHS recently held their induction, where we inducted over 70 members into the National Honor Society, where they had to uphold 3.5 GPA and have a certain number of clubs and activities that they participated in. As well, Core 2062 had a very good season this year. We made a very capable robot, and we're actually a captain at the Duluth Meet, which was very cool, because we haven't been successful in previous years, but this year, we were pretty good. Lastly, we held LC24, which is West Leadership Conference, and the Leadership Conference was a student-led seminar focusing on improving leadership skills. This year, the theme was Good to Great, and focused on building on problem-solving skills and picking yourself back up from failures.
Some other successes of the spring and winter season. The French Club participated in the National French Contest, which had two tests, reading and listening, where French speaker, well, artist students would attempt to show their skills in the French, French speaking. Bennett Warpe earned a silver medal, Raphael earned a gold medal, and Bridgette Simmons earned an honorable mention in the contest. WSMA State also occurred this past weekend at Carroll, with over 20 soloists and ensembles attending the state contest, and many groups earned a 1 or a 2 in their solo and ensemble pieces. Frontix had 12 state qualifiers this year and all returned with medals, with some of the more standout performances being from Madeline Kowitski and Sophie, who both earned perfect scores and gold medals.
All right, now, Mr. Pat told us we had to tell you a little bit about ourselves, so here is that slide. I will be attending Purdue University in the fall, going for mechanical engineering.
And then I will be attending UW-Madison and going for a major in computer science.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, you both did an amazing job. You're such great speakers. It is not lost on me, Grant, that you didn't use your notes too much, so you guys are very well-prepared, and I'm impressed. Also excited to see you pursuing technical career paths potentially, so two great fields. All right, what questions do board members have? Mrs. Voight.
I had the opportunity to go to the Leadership Conference, 24th, the Good to Great, and I was very impressed with the number of students there and the excitement and enthusiasm that they were sharing with other schools, to give them an opportunity to be able to follow the example that you're able to have so successfully involved, you know, in the program at West.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grant, the last time you were here, I think you mentioned, you used, are you participating in the Trek Collective? Was that where you were doing some of the robotics-related work?
Yes, so in Trek, I was participating. I was doing toy design, so I was using 3D software to design toys. And last time I talked to you, I talked about the little rocket desk toy, and now I've actually been working on a paper airplane launcher, which is pretty cool. It's a little handheld thing that, it applies to any paper airplane, and I've even made packaging. I've collaborated with other students and actually packaged the thing. And so if I wanted to, I could take it to the next level and actually begin to sell it.
Send us a video, or bring it. So how long have you known you wanted to be an engineer?
I've always liked working with my hands, and it's kind of always been like, I like building stuff, I like doing stuff. When I got to high school, all the opportunities they had with the Project Lead the Way classes, with the Trek, with robotics in itself, kind of allowed me to figure out where I wanted to go, where I wanted to do in that kind of hands, math, building kind of area. And so I kind of discovered my passion for mechanical engineering through all those programs.
And what about you, Lisa? When did you decide that you wanted to go into computer science?
I took a lot of computer programming classes in middle school for like summer programs, and it was there where I learned that I really love to work with block coding, work with coding, trying to figure out problems, figure out ways to solve different problems. And like from there, I kind of tried to build like how many programs I know, trying to learn all these different coding programs to see like which ones I liked more or less, and like if I still like, like the major as it is.
Did you attempt any of our EP computer science classes, or what did, what did your education include?
So currently at West, I think next year, we're introducing the AP Computer Science Principles class, but when I took it, I ended up taking it like online on E-Achieve, and I really enjoyed working with like binary, working with hex decimals, like learning all the different little things that go into computer programming, and like all the different things that occur with programming and stuff. I just thought the class was really nicely taught, and I learned a lot from taking the class, and I am excited to see that AP Computer Science Principles will be occurring at West next year.
Great. It's a nice introduction. Great. What other questions? Sorry, I'm kind of monopolizing. All right, well, thank you both for being here. Congratulations on all your accomplishments. All right, we are now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have two speakers tonight, which means each individual will be limited to three minutes. I'm sorry, speakers will be notified at three minutes, but allowed up to five minutes to complete their comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We'd like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways, and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used in the area behind the speaker, and podiums shall be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phone. Our first speaker this evening is Suzie Nitsky.
I have a bad knee.
Welcome.
Good evening. I would like to speak briefly. I am the parent of a child in the Waukesha School District. I just want to bring up one concern that I'd like to address. The school parking fees. The school parking fees coming in at $200 a year is quite a lot, I feel, and other parents have spoke their concerns with me as I addressed them to ask their opinions. Winter, the lots are not properly maintained very well. They're not patrolled because the kids are driving like crazy, and I believe that the lots are paid for, all that by the taxpayers. If, it could maybe become more transparent on what these fees are being used for and made for public record. I'm wondering, due to all the other school fees parents are responsible for, if this is something that can be looked at to lower and make it more affordable for parents in the school year coming up this September. I'm also thankful for our district to continue to move forward in education, and I would like to welcome Eric Brooks. And congratulations, Kelly and Anthony, I'm your reelection. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Reese.
Good evening. I'd like to talk about 4K, since it was brought up last month at this meeting. But first, I want to define it. What is 4K? You know, it's really just a Head Start program renamed and repackaged and fed to people. It is a glorified daycare. It's very expensive, but people like it because why? On the front end, it's cheaper. You know, if I buy a car and I have a 10-year loan versus a three-year loan, I pay a lot more overall, but I get a little cheaper monthly payments, and people only look at what's right ahead of them. They don't look at how much of this is going to cost them in the long run. So one thing that was brought up by saying, and Diane, I'm not, I'm not saying this to be an attack or anything, but what you said, and I just want to bring it up, and it's an opinion, in which, here's what I wrote it down, which I think is a great fundamental literacy, foundational literacy skill for teaching all of our kids. That's opinion by a lot of people, health. They, they, they believe that, and again, Diane said, "I think," so that's an opinion. I disagree. I don't see that. I didn't see that in my kid right now. He had, he went to 4K, and if I'm going to pay as a taxpayer for daycare, I'm going to use it. I'm not paying twice. And he's now in private school, and none of the other kids there went to 4K, and he's not ahead of them. They're all the same. They're at the same point. And with, with Head Start, they never saw any evidence of any advancement in, in kids at second grade. By the time they were at second grade, they were all, whether or not they did Head Start or not, they were all at the same spot. So it's just an expensive daycare for kids. It, what was I going to say about it? There is just, it lacks, it lacks, there's no evidence for this, the necessity of it. It is expensive. It, there's something else I want to get to on it, and I'm drawing a blank, and I should have made little notes. But, gosh darn it. It doesn't, there's no academic advantage to this. It's so expensive. It, darn it, I'm sorry, I do a blank, I knew I shouldn't make, usually I make little notes, and I didn't do that tonight. But anyways, my major point is that it doesn't make any sense. It is, it, it just, there's no advantage in the future that you see with 4K. It's a very expensive daycare. Anyways, thanks for the time.
Thank you. All right, moving into some business items. Our first item tonight is minutes approval. We have three sets of minutes for your consideration. The April 10th regular board meeting, the April 10th executive session, and the April 22nd board reorganization meeting. Mrs. Voight.
I move to approve the three sets of minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zenobia. Any discussion or questions? Okay, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 9-0. Next up is our WEF report. Mr. Barowski.
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. All right, the Waukesha Education Foundation Board last met last Thursday, May 2nd, and I just want to start out by saying the board is looking forward to welcoming Ms. Koenig as the new board liaison. And I just, I think with your connection to the district and teaching, being a former teacher, and being in the district for 20 years, that it's going to be a great connection, so I think it's a great fit, so looking forward to that. And we'll be transitioning over the next couple of months, so, anyway, so glad to see that on the horizon. And I definitely, I guess I should also say, I totally enjoyed my time as the board liaison for Waukesha Education Foundation, and we'll probably stay connected in some way, so, anyway. Also wanted to thank everyone who attended the Evening for Education a couple of weeks ago. We had a great turnout, and the event raised right around $30,000, which was tremendous. Next item, WEF-held scholarship winners are going to be announced at the high schools on the next three Wednesdays, excuse me, three Wednesday nights at the senior awards events. And we have a record total of scholarships this year totaling $49,050, which also includes the four middle school band awards. And we're going to be celebrating those scholarship winners along with our donors and business partners at the Partners in Education reception on June 12th, beginning at 4:30 at Carroll University. So if you have not RSVP'd yet, please do. Again, that's the same night as our next board meeting, so if you can fit it in before the board meeting, that would be great. We do have a record total of scholarships this year totaling $49,050. I think I just mentioned that. And let's see here. Oh, the deadline to RSVP is on June 3rd, and you've been emailed an invite. You also have a flyer at your desk there to RSVP off of. And we do need counts for food, so please RSVP on time. The grant team selected our 2024 grant winners, and they'll be announced this month. I guess some facts on the grant submissions. There were 64 grant submissions overall, and totaled a There were 64 grant submissions overall and totaled a $209,919.05, which was a new record for grant submissions. Many of the requests were larger than in previous years and really just averaged thousands of dollars. The average grant request amount was $3,280. So definitely seeing an increase in the number of submissions and the size of the submissions. WEF was able to fund 26% of the requests in terms of dollars that we received. And in terms of applications, we were able to fund either partially or in full 33 out of the 64 applications. So like 52% of them. So giving you an idea of what we're able to respond to. Next item is the golf. So our August 1st golf outing is open for registration, obviously a little bit less than three months away. We currently have 116 golfers and are shooting for 172. So we do need help finding golfers this year. I had a little bit of a scheduling snafu where there's another event the day before. That's, I guess, marketing to some of the same golfers. So if you're ever going to invite someone and try to get a forceful together, this is the year because we definitely need some golfers. So you can visit wefgolf.givesmart.com to register or just text WESTGOLF to 76278 for more information. And that's all I've got for the WEF report.
All right, thank you. Well, the Evening for Education was fantastic. I just do have to add, though, that the heads or tails competition was rigged. Because there's literally no chance that that would happen. Just so everybody knows, there's a 3% chance that, that has, or tails is going to come that many times. But I had some help.
I think you learned, like Ms. Kozlowski learned last year, that you can't buy victory.
Mathematical improbability, but it was lots of fun. So it was a wonderful evening. Any questions about upcoming WEF activities? All right, thank you. That's correct. You cannot buy yourself into a whiz. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Barowski. And thank you for the time that you've served on behalf of the school board as a representative to WEF. And we're very excited about Mrs. Koenig now coming on board. So thank you. All right, I added an item to general business because I thought it would be valuable for us to talk about this as a board. The fact there being nine of us and multiple cabinet members and lots of people to coordinate. So the topic being board and committee times. So really just want to emphasize that we're focusing on the times right now, not necessarily the content or substance or membership of the committees, but the schedule. Last year, we attempted some changes and that included stacking committees, which can, can be challenging. There are pros and cons to that and we can kind of talk through that. And then also, we made a change to move what used to be the policy committee meeting, which was the week after the full board meeting, which was a little bit ineffective because we were meeting immediately after and then the three weeks would go by and we would come back. The positive feedback that I got from a lot of you was also getting that business done in the first couple of weeks of the month was helpful because then we have some flexibility to do school-related events or other types of, even, you know, in our day jobs and things like that. But it does mean that we have periodically, although it does not appear that this is going to happen for the next school year, that periodically we get these weeks like this one where we've got, you know, six meetings that are kind of packed in. And I, and I can appreciate that we also have with the committees back-to-back. Makes it difficult sometimes for committee members to have consistent start times. And I think that also makes it difficult sometimes for the public to know, you know, when the public comments and, and things are going to start. So the other thing that I just wanted to put on the table is, and I didn't want to make this change again without discussion and also without having it in a, a public forum so we didn't surprise anybody in the public by changing significant times. So this full board meeting has consistently been at 7 o'clock on the second Wednesday of the month for a long, long time. I, I'd like to discuss possibly moving HR to 6:00 PM start, moving the HR committee meeting to a 6:00 PM start so that we could start the board meeting at 6:30. It's only a half hour, but I know there are many, many nights where we're here until, you know, 10:30, 11:30, closed session and things like that. And so I just feel like that half hour might give everybody a little bit of relief. But I also understand that when, the earlier we start things, the harder it is for folks to be prepared and to get here on time. So it really is open for discussion. I would love to hear any feedback or comments or thoughts. And at this point in time, we have the schedule that was sent out. We can keep it the way it is or we could consider doing something different. This is not an action item. It's really more of a discussion. And then I'll have to consider what we might do differently. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Piasak, for bringing this to the attention to the public. It's no secret, I've said this before, that in my humble opinion, I have no issue with the general board meeting starting at 6:30. I'm more focused on the committee times in terms of specifically the finance and the policy committee. Last year, it made sense why policy went after the, why, went, went, went as a second meeting after another committee meeting where it was finance or anything else because we met every other month. And so we did have a lot of things stacked up because we only met every other month. But because we're meeting every month now, things are going smoother. And finance and teaching and learning are the most heavy content committees. So because of that, it takes a longer time. We've seen that numerous of times where we've had to, you know, respectfully wait as finance committee went into executive session, as they should have. I know things are important. And also the public has waited as well. So with policy, it's just a shorter timeframe with us getting the business done, having our meeting kind of wrapped up within less than an hour versus finance and facilities where things have went longer than that. And so we're waiting outside as committee members for policy or even the public, and we're unsure when we're going to start. And so that's just a concern that I had that maybe finance and policy should switch because we have lesser, kind of lesser content and, and, and a lesser timeframe than finance as they have a lot of things to work through, which is understandable. So that's just what I want to throw out there as my, my opinion to you and also the public and my board, my fellow board members.
And I'm guessing some folks might want to respond to this. I just want to clarify because there's a little bit of history as to why FNF was going before policy. And also to clarify that this, this week is just the first time that we're, we're getting back to a monthly policy meeting. So I'm not sure yet what that content's going to look like. The reason we did FNF first and the reason we did it at 5:30 is actually out of courtesy for the business office staff because there's quite a few members of Darren's team that participate in that meeting. And so the policy committee is a little bit different in that we, we have Dr. Seibert as the administrative liaison, but we don't necessarily have a lot of office staff or administrative staff that come in. So the rationale for doing that was just to be kind to the business office staff that was already here in the building so that they weren't having to wait for an hour or an hour and a half for the policy committee meeting to be done and then to come back and, and join the FNF meeting. We could look at different nights of things too, but I just wanted to clarify why, why FNF was first. And I think a similar problem that you mentioned happens with, with TNL folks having to wait sometimes if student services goes long. And I'm always surprised, right? There's eight things on the agenda and they wrap up in 45 minutes. And then there's two things on the agenda and it takes an hour and a half, right? So what, what other comments do folks have? Thank you, Markell. Mr. Wad.
Yeah, just a couple of items. First of all, have, have we gotten any specific complaints from constituents who find it difficult to figure out when, especially those meetings that their start times may fluctuate because they're stacked on the backend? Have we heard anything?
I have not. And I also, I know that there were a couple of TNL meetings when we had a decent representation of parents. But I'm curious, Mr. Zenobia, were there a lot of public comments last year with policy and government relations?
Actually, I don't believe there were any all year. And there were a few on other committees that we had stacked. Even student services, I think, maybe saw one or two. So it was very, it was very light.
Okay.
And I guess then from my perspective, and this is just, I happen to serve on both committees that meet on Monday nights. So it doesn't matter to me whether we start, which order we go in. I guess I'd be curious to know, though, if there's anyone who's struggling with the start time, regardless of which committee it is. Perhaps that could provide some, some guidance to you if you have people that are really struggling to make finance at 5:30, but would, but the other membership of the policy committee wouldn't. Perhaps that may help us. I don't know. 5:30 is a little tight. I can, I can make it when I remember that that's what time it starts at, but.
It's the hardest one for me.
But I, that would be the thing I think would be the most important consideration from the committee membership perspective is, is that 5:30 start time tight for people whose work days may run very close to that.
And I can also share in response that part, part of the motivation in creating the student services committee was because the, the teaching and learning committee agenda was going on so long. And those student services-related conversations were ones that we really needed to take time. And so they would kind of end up at the end of the agenda. And then we were just, you know, trying to rush through things that we needed to take time with. But we still, I think we still have some work to do as far as working with our administrative liaisons to make sure that the agendas are built in a way, we, we're kind of getting to know our speakers and our topics. But even last night's TNL was a great example. There's probably too many things on the agenda. Even if we had had all of the time, it probably would have been difficult to get it in. But, so that might be another thing is how do we ensure, and this could be something that you and Mrs. Kozlowski could work together on, how do we ensure that we can make the meetings kind of wrapped to the right time? But, so you had asked about the 5:30 start. Are there any other finance committee folks that struggle with the 5:30 start? I mean, I, I do, but it's once a month.
So I think this, this one kind of came up this month in particular. And I will tell you that as a finance person, the first week of every month is extremely challenging on finance teams. And so this, for me, it fell at a point where I had revenue projections, EBITDA projections, all due and having to leave and, and prepare. So selfishly, 5:30 can be very tight for me. But I do want to respect the fact that I've got Mr. Clark's entire team that is in office. I've always made it work. This is part of the pieces that we do. We juggle, we shift. I go back and, and work or I get up earlier. I mean, this has been a part of my life for, you know, 28 years, being able to do that. And, and so for not me, but it has to be respectful of the team that supports FNF. And 5:30 that works for them, then we need as a business and as a board, we need to support that.
Is it in particular, Carrie, is it these, these weeks where everything's packed into one? Because typically the finance meeting would be the second Monday. Okay.
So for me, if you think about the fourth business day is when everything for me is due. So yeah, those, I.
And that's something Dr. Seibert and I had talked about. When we have situations like this, rather than bringing everything into one week, perhaps everything just starts with TNL on the first Tuesday, FNF on the following Monday, full board meeting on the following Wednesday. So we just may have some situations where the full board meeting is the third Wednesday of the month just to avoid this packing in of all the meetings. And then I don't think that situation would actually happen.
Correct.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you. And, and thank you for explaining that in terms of the administration, giving us the context behind that. I understand that and, and I heard, I hear Mr. Wad and Mrs. Kozlowski's point. But let's look at the other end of board members who are only on one committee that day versus two. They have to wait and, and they have to, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult. What I'm saying is that look at that perspective as well. For example, you know, Mr. Wad is on both committees that day, but I'm not. So then I come and I'm waiting an hour and a half, whatever, outside, like last month. And, you know, this is a time sensitive, like Ms. Kozlowski says, she has a lot of things going on the first week of her job. We all do it in our careers in different times, you know. Some people have, you know, at the end of their shift or at the beginning of their shift, earlier start times. And so I want to respect everybody's time. We know that, you know, we live in a time-sensitive society. And so because of that, I just think we need to find a balance on making sure that it's, 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 it's fair on everybody's end. That way, nobody's getting, nobody's waiting too long and nobody's being forced to come too early of a, of a rush time start. So that's a difficult thing to work through. But hopefully we can work some, we can work through that, so.
Mrs. Kozlowski and then Mr. Wad.
I appreciate the feedback. In, you know, in reflection, I know I've had conversations just briefly this week as we talked about the times. As an elected official, it is our duty to serve as required by our constituents at the times that the board has met, when they need us to do that, and to serve and work and partner with the administration and to execute duly responsibilities of our role. So there are pieces of committees and there are times when we do things that aren't personally appeasing, as I earlier noted, that we make it work. All of us have jobs, all of us have lives, all of us have priorities. But we were elected to make these meetings work that best serves the district that we support and the constituents. So for me, this is not about individual board members per se. This is about the whole and supporting all that that we serve. So I, I think that that's where we need to get. I do like when these weeks are stacked. Dr. Piasak, I, I do like breaking it up and understanding that these weeks are short. They don't, we don't have stacked months like this. I think it's a few times a year. And we've made exceptions to be able to balance that, which I think is, is appropriate.
Mr. Wad.
Yeah. So first of all, I, I mean, I know FNF has run longer than planned, but I don't think it's been by significant amounts that I can recall. I actually think student services tended to run a lot longer and push back teaching and learning than facilities and finance that were pushing back policy. I also, I mean, I, without restating everything, I, I also agree with Mrs. Kozlowski. I think all of us, when we run for this office, know that there are going to be times when there are going to be demands placed on us to serve our constituents. And that's what we signed up for. So I, I mean, to the extent that we can do things that address specific individual concerns or time constraints of board members, great. But I can think of any number of times where I've been asked as a board member to carve out time that isn't on a calendar anywhere, but something came up that we needed to address. And I think that's kind of what we sign up for with our committee assignments as well. Final thing I wanted to speak to. I rather like the idea that you just floated about the cadence being around, the first week is this group of committee meetings. The second week is this group of committee meetings and the board meeting. So we don't ever have to worry about being crammed into one week. I don't know if there's any history or there's something magical about doing the board meeting on the second, is it the second Wednesday of each month? But I think it's certainly within our discretion to review that and see if that makes sense at this point. I, I think the public would, would adjust to that quite, just.
Mr. Moore, I'm going to have Mrs. Voight comment and then we'll come back to you since she hasn't had a chance yet.
I agree with the idea that to go to that third Wednesday and not have the three, three nights of, you know, double stacked meetings.
Based on what Mrs. Ettinger and Dr. Seibert and I looked at for the upcoming year, this doesn't happen again. We did take a look, though, and I think you'll see that in your schedule, and suggested a modification for January because what we found last year, this past year, is we came right out of the holiday break into committee meetings and there wasn't, there wasn't the preparation time. So we suggested that. And same with April, same again. I think in April this year, we went with moving TNL to Thursday and I think everybody was appreciative of that. And I, I would just recommend that we keep that. So we have flexibility on the calendar as long as our board secretary, you know, can reach out and make sure that people are available and as long as we meet the posting requirements, the notice requirements of the meetings. I think that consistency, though, is important for the public because you don't want somebody showing up on the second Wednesday and then they're like, oh, there's no meeting. But at least they didn't miss it because it's actually going to be the next week. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Dr. Piasak. You kind of hit the nail on the head. It was that part. We understand that we're elected officials and so we don't need to discuss all that. We know our roles. We know the times we're supposed to be here. We know we signed up for our job as to serve the district. We all have a clear understanding of that, all nine of us. It was the consistency part. That's the point I was making with. While I do agree with everything that Mrs. Kozlowski, Mr. Wad said, we know that part. And. I do agree with everything that Mrs. Kozlowski, Mr. Wad said, we know that part, and Mr. Wad and Ms. Voight, when they talked about the new schedule, I agree with that as well. But the main point I was making was the consistency of which you also stated yourself. So that's the point I wanted to make, and hopefully, the chairs of these committees can be more efficient with that and take that note as we move forward. Thank you.
Mrs. Zenobia.
Thank you. So I actually had brought this up to Dr. Piassek about two ago. The Policy Committee did have a couple of times where we waited. I think it might be an hour for Finance to finish up. But understanding that the team is here, the Finance team, Darren's team, that I could live with the fact that we had to do it at 5:30, just out of convenience. The more people that are here, each committee, you know, made the difference to me. And if I could pivot on that a little bit, if we had the opportunity to possibly move the main board meeting to 6:30, I think that'd be a great idea. I think that depends a little bit on the people on the HR Committee. I think there's three now, so if they could do it at 6:00. And I don't know if that's possible, but would consider what that would look like.
Mrs. Koenig.
Yeah, thank you. Well, as someone on the HR Committee and someone who's on another committee that starts at 6 o'clock on Tuesday before the TNL, I would have no problem moving to 6 o'clock to start the regular board meeting at 6:30. I don't know how the other two people feel, but I'm perfectly fine with that. I'm used to a 6 o'clock start. In fact, I'm usually ready, and I'm kind of stalling waiting that so I don't get here too early, but I would be fine with that. And just to pick up on something Mr. Moore said, I understand that it's difficult to wait when you're in a second committee, because I'm usually in the committee that causes the delay part of the time, but it's really hard when you have an agenda and you have things to be discussed, and you really can't regulate how the conversation's going to go or how the discussion is going to end up. That's a very important time that we have to sit together and discuss the issues and to examine all aspects of something, and I wouldn't want that time to feel rushed, because, you know, someone might be waiting an extra 10 or 15 minutes, and I understand the inconvenience. However, it is once a month, and again, it's to what you said, Mrs. Kozlowski. When I ran for this position, I fully knew that I was getting myself involved in, you know, multiple meetings. I didn't know how long they would go, and yes, some of the board meetings are, I don't leave until 5:00 after 11:00. I understand that. But it is once a month, and I do enjoy it being stacked early in the month, only because it allows the last two weeks of the month, if you wanted to take a week off to go somewhere or to make plans, you know you're safe during that part. So I'm okay with stacking the first, you know, I guess, half of the month, but I just wanted to mention that it is difficult to regulate a conversation or a meeting, because you don't know where the discussion's going to lead, and it could be, like you had said, it could be two items on the agenda that stretch into three hours, or it could be five items on the agenda that you've done in 30 minutes. So I'm not comfortable with that. We have to be done by this time, because if there's other things to be discussed, you want to make sure we utilize that time, because it is once a month, and a lot of important things, you know, do get discussed. So I would be fine with moving the HR to 6:00. I just wanted to mention.
Mr. Broowski.
Yeah, I would echo that as well. Just as the HR Committee Chair, I have no problem going to 6:00. It's a slight adjustment on preparation that day, but nothing major. So I'm all for that, because I think it is a good move to move to 6:30 for the board meeting. I also just want to say I appreciate Dr. Piassek, the tweaking, and sometimes even last year more than tweaking of all the committees, really taking a thoughtful look at the committees, trying to move the workload around as far as splitting up the policies to each one of the committees, creating a Student Services Committee. I do appreciate that. So there's a lot of good changes going on. This would be one more. So I'm all for the HR Committee and the board meeting changing. One last comment, I think, on the Policy and FNF. One option, I guess, could be to just move Policy to 7:00, to give a full hour and a half to FNF. I'm guessing you probably use that time. I haven't looked back at each of the YouTube videos to see how long, but that might help as far as the not waiting and that kind of thing. So, anyway.
I'm going to go to Mr. Brooks, and then I'll come back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Piassek. Yeah, I mean, I've only had one week full of committees, and outside of a tornado warning, I haven't been massively inconvenienced by anything, so it's hard for me to really speak to it, but I'm pretty flexible to echo what other folks had said. I can make it work. It's one committee meeting a month for each one and one board meeting a month. You know, working in the state legislature, we see committee meetings run hours and hours over time all the time, and you can't predict it. And yeah, there are some days where you're like, man, this committee's going to go really short and takes five hours, and there are some days where you think it's going to be a long haul, and you get out of there in 45 minutes. You never know. So you don't want to shortchange anybody who has something of value to say or speak to. So I'm good with any of the recommendations. I like the idea of kind of shuffling things around so that we're not stacking everything, but I have no real preference, and I can adjust my schedule to whatever works best for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, and then Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Koenig and Mr. Broowski and Mr. Brooks. What I'm saying is the same thing in terms of, I guess I'm not trying to say we need to rush anything. Mrs. Koenig was right. You know, you can't regulate different items on the agenda. It takes time. Absolutely, it takes time. When we go into policy, there's some days where we spend more time on one policy than the other. When we look at HR sometimes, we have to go into executive session a couple of times with HR. So it does take time, absolutely. Mr. Broowski made a good point. Then why not just have, say, Policy's going to start at 7:00? The way it gives Finance and Facilities enough time, more than enough. But when you say 5:30 to 6:30, let's be realistic. I even agree with Ms. Koenig. I don't think you're going to be able to get through one hour with everything with Finance and Facilities. So Ms. Koenig is right on that. Give Finance and Facility an extra half hour. If they need to start at 5:30, that is fine. All I'm saying is that maybe make Policy at 7:00 PM or 7:15. That way, okay, we kind of know how things are going to go. We don't know for sure, like Ms. Koenig said. You can't regulate it, but it gives you that buffer window to kind of, you know, if they need that extra time, it's there for them, and no one's feeling shortchanged, like Mr. Brooks said. That way, it's for everybody's end. Thank you.
Mrs. Kozlowski, and then Mr. Wad.
Great. And just a small defense of FNF and pending, knock on wood, how things go tonight, most of our issues were around a bus contract, just saying. But Dr. Piassek, to get, I think, back to the schedule of where you're going, we're looking for some type of a consensus to get to the staggering of where we're at within the overall board meeting, starting a half hour early, because the main board meeting is where we really have the heart of everything coming together, which extends. And I think from what I'm hearing, that's a consensus we agree with.
Thank you. Mr. Wad.
Yeah, just real quick. As part of the HR Committee, I'm perfectly fine with moving it to 6:00, and I fully support starting the board meetings at 6:30. I think that actually, that extra half hour that we finish early will, I think, have a big impact on all of us. Some of our nights have been very late. And just one final thought. I think this whole thing around Finance and Policy start times or whatever can easily be worked out. I think all we need to do is go back and kind of look at what is the average amount of time we spend in a Finance meeting, and use that as our benchmark for how long we schedule them for. And here's the reality. If we wind up starting Policy too late, then it's the members of Facilities and Finance that sit around, or it's the members of Policy that sit around if Finance runs over. This is an unavoidable issue when we put these back to back, and, you know, to other points made, the last thing we want to be doing is trying to time-box committee meetings, because people are going to start feeling like their voices are being limited or conversations aren't getting the thorough discussion they need. So I think we all just need to accept the fact that if we're going to get the efficiency from stacking them, there's going to be some time that some of us will have to sit around a little extra time that ultimately is to the benefit of the entire board and the staff here, the administrative staff that comes, and the public.
It's a little bit, so it's a trade-off of having, you know, three nights a month where we have to be available versus having five nights a month. We tried some other things, like having the Government Relations Committee in the morning or the Policy Committee early in the morning, which also becomes challenging to some degree. I know there's other districts that do that, too, but that makes it difficult for the So I think that question of, you know, generally, I'm kind of hearing that people like the stacking with the negative being when those agendas run long, and, I mean, for me, when we're late to start TNL, I value being able to sit and listen to the conversation for Student Services, because I'm going to go watch it anyway, and then I just, you know, I actually save time by the committee running late. So, but I know that's not the case for everybody. Mr. Moore.
I would agree with, like Mr. Wad said, again, and Ms. Koenig, I don't think we should be time-boxing. That was not my intent. Again, my intent was just what Dr. Piassek said, just like kind of, again, just making sure that, you know, we just have an understanding on consistency. Like, if it takes longer, that's fine. We all can agree to that. I think that I have no problem. Many, all of us don't have any issue. We know that it's going to come with pros and cons with these stackable meetings. Where I'm kind of wrestling with is, I'm okay with the 6:30 time for the general board meeting, but I feel like we're kind of being a little bit hypocritical here on one end with the committee meetings. Let's not stack them. Let's not be time-boxing. As elected officials, it's our job to serve at any time that we do, but here we are trying to move a general board meeting up to 6:30, and we usually start it at 7:00. So I'm not against it. I'm just kind of, I'm kind of like wrestling with that kind of notion right now. But nonetheless, I hear everyone, and I guess I'm on board, too.
Mrs. Koenig.
Well, I think the reason we were going to move it to 6:30 was so we wouldn't have such late nights, and if we move HR up, you know, 15 minutes, that would allow for the time for HR to have their meeting and our meeting. And 6:30, I thought the reason we moved it up was so we would not, we would allow an extra time and not maybe be here so late. So I'm not sure I'm understanding.
It's a little different of a reason, but, you know, that's always been stacked, HR to a full board meeting, and there have been times, at least even in my recent experience, I'm sure Mrs. Voight has as well, where HR has run long and we're delaying starting the full board meeting with students and families and people all kind of hanging out in the gallery. So, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't think it's necessarily hypocritical. I think we're just trying to find the best solution for each night, you know, and we're talking through it, and I think we're getting there.
So based on this discussion, I think we could go ahead with moving the full board, so the HR, to 6:00 PM, followed by the full board meeting at 6:30. I think, you know, we'll keep an eye on the calendar going forward and avoid the three in a row, if there is a rare exception, at least in the next, I know it's not in the next calendar year, so we'll kind of take that as we go, or school year, I should say. And then maybe if I could just look to Mrs. Kozlowski and Mr. Clark to just take a look back and give a little bit of an assessment about, is an hour enough? Perhaps there are times when we know certain business has to happen based on statutory requirements or based on budgetary schedules, and we might want to accommodate extra time. So that just may be something to say, well, we're going to just, you know, proactively delay Policy by a half hour or something like that. So that might be something to consider, and with so few public comments in Policy, that might not affect too many constituents. So could you guys just maybe take a look at that?
Yeah, and Carrie and I have talked about mapping out, like, the next three FNF meetings, and maybe there's some balancing to be done there to make that more likely, but it's seasonal, topical, so we'll see.
And technically, they're getting an hour and 15 minutes now, because Policy wasn't starting at 6:45, so a little more than an hour.
I just make one more comment.
Yes, absolutely.
No, that's okay. Thinking, too, you know, on our board night, our whole and entire board meeting evenings, when we have speakers and students come and different things, a 6:30 time is, you know, a lot more respectful for their evenings, because sometimes, you know, they don't get up until 7:00 or 7:30, quarter to 8:00, 8:00 o'clock, and some of the staff members that are here sharing different things. It's late nights, and it's a work night, so it's late nights for them, too, as well. So they might actually welcome a 6:30 start time.
Yep. Having been on the other side of the podium, I think people would appreciate that, too. All right. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate the discussion. So we will move on. We're moving to our consent agenda. There are no public gifts report this month. As a reminder, your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity in a moment. There are no expulsion actions this evening. Under Policies and Bylaws, there are multiple, okay, Policy 7250.01 Memorials for Staff and Students was tabled at the Policy Committee, so that's not included this evening. Policies that were approved by the Committee are Policy 0100 Definitions, Policy 0122 Board Powers, Policy 0144.3 Conflict of Interest, Policy 8420 School Safety, Policy 5610 Suspension and Expulsion, and Policy 5460 Graduation Requirements. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate so at this time. All right, seeing none, Mr. Broowski, would you present the consent agenda for approval, please?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. President. So early this evening, the Human Resource and Compensation Committee approved eight resignations, three leaves of absence, and 860 new contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desk. I move the consent agenda to be approved as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wad. Any discussion? Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Abstained due to a potential conflict of interest with the new contracts.
Mark Broowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piassek.
Aye. Passes 801.
I, Mrs. President, conclude my report.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Seber.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piassek. Begin tonight with my recently-approved overnight field trips. As we're nearing the end of the year, there's very few. We have one for West for Girls Track and Field State Lacrosse in May, and then one for next September, South, the Empire Mock Trial Competition in Philadelphia. So we've heard about the mock trial team at South multiple times here. They're very talented. Beyond that, just a few items for the board this evening. The first is that today is School Nurses Day, so I want to say thank you to our three wonderful district nurses for the service that they provide to the School District of Waukesha. Second, it is Teacher Appreciation Week. We're so very grateful for our over 900 teachers in the School District of Waukesha who dedicate themselves to the kids and families of our community. They are very, very much appreciated here in the SDW. And as we come closer to the end of yet another school year, we find ourselves in the season of celebrations, and that began, many of you were in attendance, on April 18th, when we held our employee recognition reception. And I just want to tell you about the numbers that we recognized that evening. So we honored 70 staff members who have amassed 10 years of service in the School District of Waukesha, 28 staff members with 15 years of service, 32 staff members with 20 years of service, and 15 staff members with 25 years of service. And now, looking to next week, we are going to host the School District of Waukesha Recognition and Retirement Dinner on Thursday, where we will celebrate 11 staff members who have 30 years of service, one staff member with 35 years of service, and then also 28 retirees. So we have a lot of talent, and we have a lot of longevity in this school district, and I think it's really a privilege that we continue to hold those events and recognize that as we try to grow more people to reach those milestones. And then we also, as you know, are going to culminate the school year with our graduation ceremonies coming up. We have East on June 6th, and then we have South, North, West, and then E-Achie, which also is hosted at South on Saturday, June 8th. So it's certainly a great time of year as we wrap up yet another school year, and I just want to recognize, too, your presence as board members, and board members at these events is really appreciated, and I think it's very symbolic of your dedication to the School District of Waukesha. So enjoy this time of year. It's some of the best times that we get to have collectively. It's some of the best times that we get to have collectively, and it's, it's wonderful. So, thank you, Dr. Piasik. That is, concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Seabert. I know everybody is busy this time of year in terms of staff and administration, and also parents and students. It's just a really, really busy time of year, so thank you to you and your district-wide team for all the extras over the next few weeks.
Our pleasure.
What's going on. All right, we're moving into our committee reports this evening, and tonight, we will be starting with Finance and Facilities reported, report given by Mrs. Koslowsky.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on Monday, May 6th. The agenda, the agenda included three discussion items. The first discussion item was enrollment projections. The committee reviewed statewide and School District of Waukesha enrollment projections presented by Sarah Kemp from Applied Population Laboratories. Student enrollment is projected to continue to decline at the state and local levels for the next several years. The next discussion item was the 2024-2025 Budget Development. The committee was presented the current revenue, revenue limited calculation projection and tax levy scenarios for the 2024-2025 school year. The discussion related to next year's tax levy identified some of the key variables that will factor into the calculation of the final tax levy that will be adopted this October. The district's first official estimate of next year's tax levy will be included in the 2024-2025 preliminary budget. The last discussion item was the Monthly Budget Report. Revenues and expenditures remain within budgeted limits for the General Fund and Special Education Fund. The district is also operating according to our approved budget for all other funds. The next FNF meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 10th, at 5:30 PM in the boardroom, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Koslowsky. Any comments? All right, our next committee report this evening is for the Teaching and Learning Committee, and I'll be giving that report tonight since Mrs. Koenig wasn't able to join us last night. So, despite our best intentions, the agenda included five discussion information items, but we'll be speaking about three of them tonight. Our first discussion item was the Three-Year Library Plan Update. The purpose of that report was to provide an update on the focused work that's been done so far this school year in the three specific areas of collaborative leadership, budgets, and curriculum and instruction. The state statute PI 8 dot zero one School District Standard parentheses two parentheses H outlines library media service requirements regarding a long-range plan. Over the course of the 22-23 school year, the library media specialists used the future-ready librarian wheel or wedges, a resource from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, as a foundational resource to guide the development of the three-year plan that then we, we create the content, and then was approved by the board, we, the administration, approved by the board in August of 2023. An update was provided on each of those three strategic actions in the priority areas that I mentioned, and updates on the library plan will be brought forward now each subsequent year, and so that's a rolling plan that will be, the three-year plan will be revisited every year. Any questions about that? Okay, next, we have the Embedded Agriculture Update. This presentation provided an overview of a new partnership between environmental education and career and technical education in our district called Embedded Agriculture. Embedded Agriculture offers hands-on gardening and farming experiences that promote environmental stewardship while also integrating farm-to-table education into the school curriculum. The district began in 2022 as a way, with this Embedded Agriculture program as a way for students to utilize surplus harvests from our gardens, and that has turned into a full curriculum where students plan, plant, harvest, and cook with their own fresh ingredients. In the 2022-23 school year, thanks to a grant from the Waukesha Education Foundation, West High School piloted a small hydroponic system. Since then, with additional community funding, partners and grants that were discussed at last night's committee meeting, the program has now moved to scale at all three comprehensive high schools in the 23-24 school year. As the partnership, partnerships continue to grow, the Embedded Agriculture program will strive for additional community connections, deeper learning about sustainability, and student-led agriculture experiences. Mrs. Voight?
I was pleased to have the opportunity to go to a state conference for the Wisconsin Retired Educators Association today, and that program was one of the recipients of five recognized across the state as being exemplary programs at the secondary level. So, they received a $2,000 award as part of that presentation today, and I was so proud of the fact that that's actually the second award that EB Shirts Environmental Education Center has received through the Wisconsin Retired Educators Association. So, we're doing some really good things in the School District of Waukesha.
That's wonderful. Very impressive. We did discuss at the committee last night too, like, the, the funding that has come in in the form of grants and partnerships and gifts, and so there's just a tremendous amount of support there, and the students are doing amazing things with these resources. Just so everyone on the board knows, there is actually, one of the hydroponics systems is here in, I think it's in, it's teaching and learning, right, or Student Services right now, but you can go visit it and have a snack from it if you're interested. It's very impressive. All right, our third discussion information item was an attempted update on the high school schedule. At the November 2023 Board of Education meeting, the proposed bell schedule for an AB block for the 24-25 school year was approved. The report reviewed what steps the high schools have taken since that November board meeting. Unfortunately, due to the weather and a tornado warning, the report was interrupted and the committee meeting was paused, and we got a tour of the building and got to find this, the safety shelter. Once the tornado warning ended, the committee meeting was concluded due to an extended severe thunderstorm warning, and of course, wanting to ensure that the committee members and the district staff were able to get home safely. So, as a result, the remaining agenda items, which included an update on the personalized learning programs and standards-based grading update, along with the conclusion of the high school schedule update, will be re-agendized at a future committee meeting, and more information will be provided through your board updates. So, that was the first, and it was very memorable, and thanks to everybody who helped us through all of that. So, that concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee Report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 4th, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom here at the Blair Administration Building. All right, we are moving on then, next, to Student Services, which will be presented by Mr. Zanobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. The Student Services Committee met here last night, May 7th, before any weather events, and we got through two action items and one discussion item. The two action items were in the consent agenda this evening, but they dealt with Policy 8420, which was school safety. It was revised to reflect the provision of training consistent with the school safety plan. In addition, records retention requirement contained within Wisconsin statutes, our statute 118 point oh seven, parent two, parent A, is included as a cross-reference in Policy 8310, which is public records. The updates avoid conflict with retention requirements in light of changes to the records retention schedules produced by the Public Records Board, and the citation there was Wisconsin Statute 121 point oh two, parent one, parent I, is removed as it refers to toxic, toxic substances and lead, which is not covered by the policy. I don't know if there's any comments at that, for that. We also discussed an approved Policy 5610, suspension expulsion, which was revised to reflect that the term principal is not necessarily limited to the principal, but may also include assistant and associate principals in that context, and that was also approved in the consent agenda. So, our first discussion information item was on the role of the School Resource Officer, and throughout the, the last school year, we've talked on Student Services about a number of presentations where we would have individuals come and describe their roles. We covered school social workers, school psychologists, counselors, and last night, we got to hear from SRO, Brandon Ernst from North High School. Mark Leonard had joined him, who is the Director of Student Services, and his information regarding the role of a School Resource Officer. Throughout his presentation, SRO Ernst stressed how important it is for officers to have the opportunity to form relationships with students and staff within the school community. He spoke about how each of them function also as a law enforcement officer, as well as a counselor and educator at times. The skill sets of the SROs include threat assessment, standard response protocols, certified drug recognition, critical incident communications, and others. And so, as a district, we continue to partner with the Waukesha Police Department and have a SRO at North, South, and West High Schools, along with the middle schools Les Paul, Butler, and Horning. The schools that do not have an SRO assigned have partner officers who patrol within additional responsibilities to partners with, with each specific school.
Mr. Wad?
Yeah, thank you. I thought the discussion with the, around the SRO role, and specifically his comments, were really, really interesting and informative. I love what Student Services is doing, bringing these different roles, and so that all of us as board members can learn, but that one was interesting to me, not only to learn more about the role, but he made some really interesting observations, for those of you that haven't had a chance to see it yet. He talked about, in response to a question from someone on the board, what's one trend you're seeing that is most concerning, and what's one trend you're seeing that is promising? And I don't think it came as a shock to me so much that the vaping, increase in vaping is a trend, but what did shock me was the strength of the product that's being provided to these kids. I had no idea. I, so I would encourage anyone who is, who may be watching this, you need to go back and watch his comments and then, or do some more research. I know I will, I have, I have an adult son who vapes, and I had no idea the strength of the nicotine and the, how highly addictive it is. On the positive side, it was really great to hear that from his observation, and it sounded to me like the observation of other SROs in our schools, that they have seen an observable decrease in the amount of bullying that they're seeing in our schools. And I think sometimes, you know, we've been hearing about bullying in schools for so long, and obviously, we know that it's, you know, when our kids are going through it, it's, it's traumatic, and we want, we want to bring it to an end. But what I was encouraged to hear was that it's decreasing, because I don't, I thought maybe the first time I've heard that from anyone, that we're actually seeing a decrease in the bullying that's happening in our schools. He noted that, you know, still a long way to go, obviously, we haven't put an end to it, but I am really pleased to hear, especially from someone on the ground that sees those kids every day, and is watching for that kind of behavior that he's seen, and his peers are seeing a decrease in it.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. I just want to echo what Mr. Wise said exactly. Everything he said was correct with the School Resource Officer. Bullying is really not the, it's still a problem, but I stated this the other day at the, at the Student Services Committee, that we need to pay more attention to students dealing with substance abuse. That is a big problem in our schools, and I think that, and not just here, I'm just saying in general, it has been overlooked. Many of our students today, I'm studying the schools, I'm here and there volunteering. I know Ms. Voight is, I know Ms. Koenig is, as former teachers, and a lot of our students are dealing with, and, and, and probably Mr. Brooks is too, a lot of our students are dealing with mental health issues, and they don't know how to cope correctly. So, they are turning to these mechanisms of vaping and nicotine abuse, and I think that it has not gotten the attention that it needs to. So, like Mr. Wise said, if you all have a chance to kind of dig more into that, please do. That's something that I just don't think that as a board member or teachers or administrators that we should be overlooking that with this generation coming up, and how we can help and, and, and put a stop to this, to save our kids. So, that's my piece, and I'm just going to leave it there.
Mr. Brooks, and then Mr. Wad?
Yeah, real briefly, I just wanted to comment on some of that Mr. Zanobia had mentioned that I think is really important, when we talk about the roles of SROs in our school, is that relationship-building piece, because I know there are a number of studies out there that show that a positive interaction with law enforcement in early age is more likely to build trust in law enforcement as you grow older, and I think that's something that, especially with various communities, and here in School District of Waukesha is critical, and being able to have that relationship built from early on and create those positive moments from an early standpoint, it'll, it'll pay dividends in the long run, so I'm glad that you brought that up.
Thank you, Mr. Wad.
Yeah, just to follow up on a couple of things related to the vaping. So, one of the observations that he also made, which I was pleased to hear, because we obviously invested some, some substantial money into upgrading our security, was a noticeable decrease, even though he didn't have before statistics to point to, just observably, we are seeing a reduction in the vaping in our schools, and I think that will continue to happen. I also want to make it clear, I have not gotten the impression from anyone that the vaping in the schools is anything this district or this board has been overlooking, and in fact, that's one of the reasons that we made the investment we did in the sensors that went into the bathroom, so I just want to make sure that that's clear. I've never gotten the impression that this is something that's overlooked, and in fact, taken very seriously by this district and this board.
I would agree. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Just to clarify, I agree with Wise, I'm not saying specifically here, that's why I said in general, we haven't overlooked it, so I want to make that clear. He's right on that. I'm just saying in general, in terms of our generation, our youth coming up, this has been a problem, and we do still have our issues in our schools, and that's why we do put those systems in place. So, I wanted to just make that clear, that I would agree with both of you as well.
Thank you.
It was a great presentation by Officer Ernst. I, I would really urge anyone, it was maybe 15 minutes that he spoke, it was really worth our time to, to get to engage him, and I think we've seen recent trends where law enforcement has gotten a bad rap, and there's some interjection of doubt in what they do, and what you really hear in that presentation is, the SRO jobs specifically, but there's, there's so many officers that enter this work to really serve, and on this level, serve students who need some extra attention in some areas. So, it, it was great to see. I know we have a great partnership with law enforcement. I, I don't think that can be downplayed at any time, so we're very thankful for that, very grateful to all those people that do serve, serve our kids and serve our district, so thank you to them. That concludes my report. We will meet again June 4th at 6:00, Student Services Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zanobia. Next committee is Human Resources and Compensation. Anything else, Mr. Browski?
Uh, no. Mrs. President, there are no action items and no discussion items, so our next meeting will be, I think, at a new time of 6:00 PM on June 12th, and that concludes what will likely be the shortest report I ever give.
You get bonus points for updating your notes on the fly, so thank you so much. All right, next is the Policy and Government Relations Committee. Mr. Wad?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, or Chairwoman. Madam President. I promise I'm not going to start making any parliamentary motions at this point.
Do you like to split that title?
Okay, the Policy and Government Relations Committee met on Monday, May 6th, 2024. The agenda included three policy revisions that were approved at the committee meeting, and included on the consent agenda we approved earlier this evening. They were Policy 0100 Definitions, 0122 Board Powers, and 0144 dot three Conflict of Interest. In addition, revisions to Policy 7250 dot zero one, memorials for staff and students were discussed. The suggested revision was for memorial proposals to be approved by the Superintendent after consultation with the Board President. The committee decided to table Policy 7250 dot zero one and requested it be brought back to a future Policy Committee meeting with alternate revisions. Suggestions included a decision-making process similar to the one outlined in Policy 7250 around naming of school facilities, which involves a review by the school site council, building leadership team as an initial step when involving a school site. The discussion information items on the agenda included three minor technical corrections. The discussion information items on the agenda included three minor technical corrections to Policies 3431 and 4431 Employee Leaves, and Policy 91400 Citizens Advisory Committee. Any questions or comments on policy items?
I do have one. I'm just looking around to see if anybody else does. One thing I just wanted to comment, and I appreciated the discussion around the memorials, and I was actually, you kind of watched this evolve, right? We had the discussion, we liked the process, we put it in action in FNF, and kind of came back and said, that's not going to work. So this is just part of kind of evolving all of this. But the thing that I just wanted to emphasize with respect to the memorial piece, and I brought this up in the FNF committee meeting, we were talking about it, the word "permanent" is a really important word, because that's the part that really causes the challenge, right? And I think we want to be cautious in trying to build big process around making decisions that are, that are special and local and pertinent to local school communities, and having it become a board and, you know, a board-level discussion. But I think the word "permanent" is really important, because when you have permanent things like walls, or trees, or certain facilities or statues that can't be moved, it actually, it limits the district's ability in some cases to do the business that we need to do, and nobody wants to have to take difficult business decisions that kind of, you know, minimize the memory or something that's very special about the reason for that memorial. So I just, as the, you know, as the administration and the committee revisits that, I think that emphasis on permanent, because we spell it out, I think, appropriately, whereas is generally speaking, we do not authorize "permanent." But there's a lot of things that can be do, that are, can be done that are nearly permanent, but have the flexibility to actually be moved or modified and still honor the memory of that individual, so I just think that that's something I would encourage that we think about, because I suspect, you know, these aren't typically going to be controversial things, but when, when we put a big process around it, I think that's what it really kind of comes back to, is these permanent things that make it difficult for the district to operate in some cases, and so just to be thoughtful about that, if that makes sense. Okay. Mr. Wad.
All right, to wrap up, during the government relations portion of the meeting, Dr. Seabert reported that he has been reaching out to representatives and senators, and will be scheduling visits this spring and summer. The goal is to further build or develop relationships, as well as discuss the School District of Waukesha and education in general. The next Policy and Government Relations Committee meeting will be held on June 10th, 2024, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, moving into other business, are there recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items tonight? Mr. Zenobia.
We had a discussion about enrollment and finance and facilities, and part of that piece was a little bit of discussion on our E-Achieve program, and didn't really know where that would fall, maybe probably TNL, but could we have a review of the E-Achieve program, and to see if we are losing some enrollment there? I think that's been a strong point for us for a long time, so in asking for that, I'm curious how competitive we are. I know other schools have entered that virtual space, and I don't know if there's, you know, some appeal to maybe ease of use, or I, you know, so I'd like to review, excuse me, some of those ideas around E-Achieve.
Okay. Just to clarify, are you talking about the, the operational business side of E-Achieve in terms of enrollment, or are you also asking about the curriculum?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm really asking so much about the curriculum, or maybe that would be something to come. I guess my, my biggest question is how, are we still very competitive in that area, and if not, then why? And maybe that's curriculum, maybe that's the process, maybe that's a lot of different things that are out of our control, so.
Mark is here. Okay, we'll make, we'll take that note, and then I think we'll have to decide whether that, it might actually be best to go back in FNF, okay. Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Another business item I would like to discuss, we brought it up in the policy committee, but like Mr. Wad said, this should have went to, this is more appropriate, like he said, I agree with him that this is more appropriate for human resources, the, just a review of the sick time and any leave or absences, just kind of a review of that. It's been brought to our attention that some school districts are not offering 10 days of PTO. I know Ms. Boyd was brought up, brought up something with unpaid leave and things like that, so just, we could kind of have a review of that, just kind of look at what is actually in place for the employees in the district, so.
Okay.
And it should have went, like, it's going to go to the Human Resource Committee.
My understanding is that's already been, or at least part of the discussion, was that that would move to HR for, for further discussion?
Right, yeah, it is, but I'm just making, just.
Okay. Okay. And just, since, since we're in that other business space right now, just a clarification for the whole group, when we bring these topics, we just have to be careful that we don't create an un-agendized discussion, so just let's be cautious not to present a bunch of information, but I, but I take the note that, what you're asking, and I've got Mr. Zenobia's as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we do have a need for closed session this evening. We have one item, and we are likely going to return.
Yes.
Correct? So I'd be looking for someone to motion us into closed session. Mr. Brooks, would you like to do the honor this evening?
I suppose. I motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.85 Parent 1, Parent E, for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, such as the People Transportation Contract, Express Swim Contract, or North Drainage Project.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Borowski. All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Diane Boyd.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 9-0. So we are adjourned to executive session. Okay, we have returned to open session. Mr. Wad, would you please take the roll call?
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Eric Brooks.
Here.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Mark Kelmore.
Here.
Mark Borowski.
Here.
Diane Boyd.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
All right, we'd be looking for a motion.
I motion to approve the People Transportation Contract and Addendum as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Zenobia. Any additional discussion? All right, Mr. Wad, would you take the roll call, please?
Yes, Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Diane Boyd.
Aye.